The last one of the big moves that we'll focus on today is number nine, sustainability. And again, we'll talk a little bit about what that is and what that means. And to me, this is one of the examples that I love to look at, this building, which I'm sure you've seen in Fort Worth, the Tarrant County College. It's a LEED Silver Building right there on the Trinity River, so that gives us a starting point. The target for this big move is a community that is sustainable over the long term. And by sustainable, we're not thinking just about things that have to do with the environment, but that the community itself is sustainable, that is desirable and thriving over the long term. The second bullet that you see here, James was pointing out to me earlier, that this is the longest bullet in the PowerPoint. But the basic points here, I think, are the idea of what this means is using limited resources efficiently, getting the quality of life you want today, and making sure that future generations can have the good quality of life in Lewisville also. That's really what it comes down to, is using the resources in a way that your children and grandchildren can also have the quality of life here in this community. This is an important big move, we think, for a couple of reasons tied in with the Green centerpiece concept. It really does change the perception of the community character. It gives you kind of more meanings of green. What is that about in this community? It's not just that area of land, but it's also kind of the attitude and the approach to things. So it further strengthens that concept of the identity. As we've said, as I've said before, the millennial generation, this is something that is important in their selection of where they're living, and therefore, it's important in the selection of businesses that need them as employees and workers. There are a lot of connections here to a lot of different aspects of your city operation and of community design. So we think it's important that it be included in the big move to provide that umbrella of direction that can then be carried out in, whether it's looking at your water system or your city facilities, electricity use, or your design standards or whatever, that having it as a big move sets the stage for those kinds of actions. It reduces your demands as a city on limited resources, and particularly, that can also translate into reduced cost for you as a city and for your taxpayers. It keeps you competitive for the things about sustainability that the market wants to see now, and I'll tell you a little more about that as we get into one of the priority areas. So I'll come back to that one. And the community input supports this. We've heard this from the committees. We heard this in the various input at the big moves and online as well. So we feel like this is an important area, one that can further distinguish this community and one that folks are interested in. There are seven action priorities for this one. Number one, look, conduct an audit of existing city sites, facilities, and vehicle fleet. The basic idea of this is pretty simple. Take a look at the things that you already control and use that audit to find ways that you can use less of those limited resources, water, energy, materials, in terms of recycling and reuse and so forth. And so that's really the first point, is do the audit and then look at carrying out or go ahead and implement the ones that make sense and are cost-effective. In the committee recommendations, there were a number of really specific items that people suggested, and I think from our standpoint in developing the big move, we feel like rather than singling out one or two of those items, it makes more sense for you to do what a lot of other cities are doing, and that is do an overall audit and then figure out what gives you the best results in terms of this. So this is talking about your existing city facilities, your existing sites, your existing fleet. The second action priority, establish or enhance design standards for new city sites and facilities. And the part that's highlighted here in red should have been included in your packet and was not, so that's why I've got it here in red. This is also thinking about private developments as well as city. The city part of it, what we heard from the community was the city should be setting an example, and the city should be using those characteristics itself, and then looking at that also for the design standards for private development. Now, we talked before about the cost of this, whether it's going to cost more to do and it's going to be hard to get into the market and so forth, and I know a few years ago that that was definitely the case. What's happening these days, though, is quite different, and I will give you two quick examples before we get into the discussion on it. One is, you may be familiar with One Victory Park, the tall office, the glass-faced office building that's right there in the Victory Park area. That's a LEED Silver Building, which is a high standard of LEED. One of the major tenants there is Haynes &amp; Boone, a major law firm, not somebody that you necessarily think of as being sort of a green company. When they made the move to that building, they intentionally chose that LEED building and went through a process of looking at their own operations in there to see about what their, how they could save things. And they, let me see if I've got my note here correctly, they have saved a significant amount in terms of their own water use, their own energy use, their space that they need to lease because of that. And the thing, I heard their managing partner do a presentation not too long ago who said, "The thing that we didn't expect was that by being in that building, we've been able to attract the best and brightest from law school." And that is really the thing that may have found to be the most important of it.
I saw that move while they were in Kentucky. I got the best, there you go.
Well, and they would always, you know, they're a company, they're a firm that gets good people anyway, but they have really noticed, they have really seen that as part of their recruitment, that that has made a difference to them. Another, we were talking earlier about the Urban Land Institute, and there was recently a presentation that they held with a developer named Gary Christensen, who builds in Utah, again, not a place that you especially think about for green development. He rebuilt, he rehabilitated or redid an 11-story building in Ogden in 2006, and his report was 50% less energy use, 65% less potable domestic water, 80% less water for sewage conveyance, and he's got, it's 11 stories, 180,000 square feet of office and retail. And he said, when asked about it, said, "What he's doing now is trying to do more in his next building." He and the others in ULI say that the market now, the tenants of commercial buildings are expecting to see some level of green design, and so if your buildings are not doing that, you're behind the curve the minute you open. So there has been a change. That does not automatically say that you should require all of that, but it definitely says that from the standpoint of the costs and from the standpoint of the market aspects of it, that there's a change going on there. And so from that standpoint, we're looking in this thing as saying, establish or enhance the design standards. They could be based on something like a green code or similar, but you can see the things that they should address. We're not saying that here's the certain standard that you ought to do, but to look at those standards in the context of this big move of sustainability. And I'm going to ask Cleve in a minute to talk about some of the other related work that he's doing on that, and that's kind of on the second half of this slide here, about those design standards. The last bullet that you see here is about a working group of design professionals, development and community members to take the lead on this effort. Cleve and folks at the Council of Developments have work like this going on right now already. So this is an area where there is some work being developed that could come back to y'all for your consideration, should you want to do that. Cleve, do you want to say something briefly about that one before we move into the other topics?
Yeah, about the International Green Codes. Currently, there is an addition, it's International Green Construction Code. This is the first edition, 2012. There's another one coming out in 2015. This is currently under review with the COG in regards to possible amendments. Talking about bold moves, I'll make a bold move here and say I'm not real pleased with the way the COG amendments are going. I think they're missing a significant portion of this document. I'm attending those meetings, and of course, this is just, the COG amendments are just recommendations on where we need to go. I'm very passionate about Green Construction Code and green in general. Sitting here and listening to all the big moves, I'm compelled to just jump out and say, "Okay, maybe Rand is the city going green or committed to green." Donna made the suggestion, "Wouldn't it be nice if it was known as the Green City?" This is the direction we're heading, and this connects, I'd almost like to call this the Big Moves Handbook, because it has connectivity, environments, impacts on the urban footprint, all kinds of conservation measures that are good for the environment and good for all the resources, wind energy, solar energy, the way a building is planned and designed, as we talked about earlier. So it's a pretty significant package. Hopefully, we'll get through this with the COG and have something to bring to Council and Council.
So in terms of the action priorities, is bringing these things to you so that you can consider those and you can look at that as part of the direction for this community?
Something I would like to add, Steve Southwell was on the Resource Management Committee. We don't have one of the chair, the chair of the co-chair here, but Steve is a very active member of that.
Yep, yep, yep. Bob, I'm sorry.
It's Bob, I'm sorry. I was saying you were broke, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'll defer to Steve.
Maybe you were broke.
Okay, so now we've established that we've got, Donna, did you want to add something or shall we just?
I just wanted to share.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I just want to say that we were very passionate about the green as well. Our subcommittee of our subcommittee really looked at the Green Construction Code, and I just wanted to bring up one more point, and I think Councilman Ferguson brought this up earlier, was that not only do you get a green product, you get a high-end product because these codes are, it's kind of a better product. So you may have heard in the past or had an impression that building green is going to cost a lot of money, it's going to keep people away. No, it keeps away the kind of construction you don't want. You know, if you're thinking you're going to get metal buildings and warehouses and things like that, maybe that's not what you want. Maybe you don't want cheap apartment buildings, maybe you want some higher end stuff. We were really happy to recommend an International Green Construction Code and really hoping the COG comes up with something good.
And Bob, I would love for you to say something too.
I actually said quite a bit already, though.
So go ahead, Bob.
No, we definitely spent a lot of time on talking about sustainability in our committee, and everyone was, as Steve said, we were passionate about the discussion. So it's something we thought very strongly about.
I quaid the favor of the two.
He kind of waddling there, right?
Now, he's stepping out on the wall move on it. Okay, so let me finish by doing the rest of the action priorities, and then we'll continue that. So the third item is evaluate and revise the city rates and procedures to encourage sustainability. Here again, there were some specific items that the committees talked about in terms of certain kinds of water rates, and what we've suggested here is a little broader statement that is, I think, more of an overall approach of let's take a look at the various kinds of rates and procedures and see what will make sense to do that. Action priority number four, help enable Lewisville residents and businesses to make sustainable mobility choices. Obviously, the use of gasoline is one of those things that creates more air quality problems and less sustainability, but oftentimes, people don't have any other options. So what we're looking at here are a number of different ways to go about giving people alternatives in addition to their car. Nobody's going to get rid of cars in this part of the country or this part of the region or anything else, but there are a lot of trips that people take that could be done otherwise, and people want those other choices. So we think that's an important part of this as well. And so again, this ties in with the network of bike and walking routes, working with DCTA to try to have more public transportation to, from, and within Lewisville, looking at other kinds of options, trolley services, bike sharing, a Zipcar, those other kinds of things that are coming around. Number five, economic development to make the economy more resilient. Part of this, it doesn't matter if you have the best recycling program in the world, if you have no jobs in your community, it's not going to be a very sustainable community. So it's important to think about this in terms of a sustainable economy as well. What this is suggesting is look at some of those sectors of the economy that could become part of or expanded here and work with the Chamber on attracting and supporting those kinds of businesses. Number six, creative ways to engage the community in this. Again, we've talked several times about that role, and I think that's especially relevant for sustainability because there is so much interest and support and enthusiasm of kids, of teenagers, of young adults. So this is a good way to harness some of that on behalf of the community. And finally, include sustainable living in the educational programs, whether that's the City, ISD, Keep Lewisville Beautiful, or others. Again, the committees had a number of specific recommendations on things like organic gardening, on home chickens, on water conservation and so forth. And rather than pick out specific programs, we felt like it was good to put this in a broader perspective, that there's a whole range of those kinds of programs that could be made available for people, again, so that people have those choices, have that information, so they can make their own choices in a more sustainable way. So now, having gone through those action items, let's talk about the overall, the questions and the comments that y'all have on sustainability. TJ, you were going to start something off already, why didn't you go?
So, yeah, bacon, whatever, not everyone. It goes back to concepts of pulling those connections back in, because you're talking sustainability, you're talking walkability, viability, transit, so those all kick back together. What's more sustainable than a farmer?
There you go. Yep, that cuts into your fighting farmers.
You got that whole concept there, and anytime we use the word green, I'd like to see and change to chartreuse, just to meet with our logo.
Why don't you just put a special market, and all you do is you add him carrying a green olive brand in. And your product brand is Lewisville, enhancing our pride going green.
That's it, like that.
But I'll link back. All right, he says that Lewisville didn't really have a, like, corporate capital, Lewisville didn't have anything. Let me ask the people that've been here a long time, went to Philly, so, when did you grow up in Lewisville? What was?
My parents.
Huh?
Farming.
No, what was the one thing you identified yourselves with?
Farmer.
Farmer what?
Farmer.
Farmer pride. When I first moved here, in '72, that was it.
Farmer pride.
Farmer pride. You didn't talk about anything. Look at all of them, they're all my dad, that's right. You didn't talk about anything, that's it, was farmer pride. So you could identify yourself with not being old school, but with a prideful approach to you. I guess under this city, it'd be with heads for, or students up there, that's what the school there, maybe, is that not what y'all grew up with?
Yeah, exactly. The farmer pride.
So to my mind, this nine fits, kind of closes the loop.
Closes the loop on the other.
And we do, we do some really creative stuff. Now, do we raise the bar? Do we, you know, if we really want to stand out from the other mid-tier cities? This would be one way.
This is, that's really, that's really the important question. Yeah, this is something that would help you be distinctive.
Cleve, can you tell what the, because now I can't remember the name of the, I know Tacoma, Tacoma, Washington got certification as a city for their green efforts. Do you want to go with that? Sustainable community, so I think somebody said sustainable creation.
The, maybe the LEED neighborhood?
Is it sustainable?
Same communities?
Sustainable community.
It's not easy to get, but I figured there's a lot of goals in there worth looking at. Are they?
And this is increasingly part of, you know, doing planning. I'm actually on a committee that's been looking at, from the standpoint of the American Planning Association, of being able to certify your plan as a plan for sustaining places. So there is that kind of discussion going on nationally about recognition for people who want to do better.
I just add one more thing. You've kind of taken the first step in your parking facility across the street from State Hall. You approved the zero scape landscaping, the drought tolerant landscaping, that's one step, and we're also staff currently is working on residential and commercial zero scapeing as an option or maybe as a requirement, which could cut down about 70% on commercial and 50% of residential as far as water usage, and then there's other things that go along with that, of course. We're looking at that in our general development ordinance rewrite as a topic as well.
Okay, what other thoughts, Leroy, what do you think?
Well, I think we have already began the process. I have had a couple of discussions with Lika in regards to where she and developers are headed with future buildings and that sort of thing. She had quite a bit to say about what she was trying to point to as far as sustainability and the products they would use, so they might like it, but she told me.
May I go ahead, please?
At least the direction she was trying to get at. To go is.
Give us a synopsis, Lika.
Well, several things. What we are, as we are talking with new developers, basically, we want to move them towards something that we call it non-typical, you know, not what I call run-of-the-mill development. So not only talk to them about sustainability in the design of their houses, but how they design their subdivisions. So we've been talking to them a lot about come up again, like, create a way of doing something. So that's been really on our radar for the past three years. Any of our new subdivisions have come in, they have stepped up to the plate and are one degree over what we've been doing in the past. But then it goes back to a lot of what we are looking at with Eric and Cleve and everybody else through our codes and to see what we want to be as we move forward. This is truly a time for us to reevaluate, it's a second chance for us. We're at that stage with I-35, with Brea, with everything that's going on, to just kind of take a step back, sit down, reevaluate, and kind of rebrand, reinvent, rather than reinvent it. This is a great opportunity.
It may not happen then.
But you're setting the stepping stones, because this doesn't happen overnight. We were just talking about what's happening in Old Town. It has taken well over 10 years to get to where it is. It's just, it's just one of those things that takes.
First thing, building is about.
Takes us hours, some time to build. But if you don't have that planning effort, we won't get there. You need that roadmap to get there. This is it, this is what we're doing.
Thank you.
We're at a moment, literally, to me, when planets have aligned. All these pieces are now coming together. Yes, this is the opportunity, and I don't, you know, you say fifty years, I don't think everyone's in the wrong team. But maybe you're tough.
We can race each other in the back. Neither, but I'm glad to be here either.
But this is really an important opportunity, you want to take advantage of that, that's for sure. Greg, what are your thoughts?
I'm okay with it, and like Lika just said, obviously, it's not going to happen overnight. I think start taking the proper steps now and we can make great strides in a matter of time.
And Reid, I see you back there. What are you thinking?
Nothing in addition right now, just need to keep moving forward.
Okay, okay.
Some of this is too micro, in my opinion, but it's a good discussion anyway. I think we still need to look at the big picture.
Okay, okay. All right, so in terms of the sustainability, it certainly sounds like y'all feel that this is an important big move. Are there further comments in terms of the direction that we've got? I think we've talked about the, go back to the action items. Trying to go back to the first one. So we've touched on a number of these items in terms of the audit, looking at the design standards, which Cleve was sharing with you as well, looking at evaluating your rates, sustainable mobility choices as part of the package, economic development, engaging the community, and including the educational programs. And I guess the overall point of this might be said even more strongly as, as I think he said, TJ, that this is really something that can set Lewisville apart. It comes full circle around the other big moves that we've been talking about, and so it really is something to be a priority for y'all. Is that your feeling, or y'all, does that reflect what you all are thinking at this point?
I only have one question. If you go back to number one, do you have a recommendation on who conducts the audit? On one of the other previous, you have a outside agency come in and do that. What is your feelings or do you have it, or did the committee have an opinion as to how this audit should be conducted or vital?
I'm not sure whether the committee had an opinion about that. I know that there are some firms that specialize in doing that, but I would also suspect that y'all may very well have that capability in-house. Let me ask Carol to address that.
We're actually required by the state to do water audits, and we're actually doing one right now. We're doing a lot of this internally. We do it through numbers, through pump ratings and those kind of things, but there is actually a format for doing an internal water audit, and we're looking at putting that together. That's all part of the conservation planning to Council as we do several target things that we have to do over the course of the next five or 10 years. And the annual or semi-annual or biannual water audit is one of those because we have to meet that state requirement at some point. So, and we're well on our way to doing that, but we are required to do a water audit. We're already, we've done one energy audit and we're doing another one. We're doing an LED changeout program that with Texas to Mexico to the Smart Choice program. We're doing that right now, and I've already got some numbers. I was trying to text while I go and get those. We are actually saving, in one case, $7,000, in other cases, $9,000 a year. So we're doing those audits. We just need to step up and do those more in-depth and just make it a bigger priority, do those as part of the overall city audit. We're also going to do a fleet audit and a building audit. We're taking, doing an assessment of all our buildings and what needs to be done there as well, so you may be seeing some of that stuff.
So a lot of that, you've got that expertise, and this is kind of, as you say, stepping up and kind of taking the next step of this.
For primary water, electricity are the two things that if we're going to save and be green and be efficient, those are two big areas we can look at.
And that's all looking internally, at city operations, and there's a whole issue related to city ordinances and how that impacts commercial and residential.
Yeah. Those are the two spots we're going to look at.
Yeah, exactly. And along with that, those design standards for the facilities, the point here about mobility choices as well, there are a lot of things that people are looking at and thinking and developing, for example, on things like how to make it easier for people to use bikes for short trips. And some of those are, are there any bike racks? Are there, you know, does the business have showers? You know, is there, you know, a lot of places, Fort Worth, I'm sure you know, has got a new bike sharing program. So there are a lot of new ideas about, from the standpoint of the mobility as well, so putting all of that into play, I think, is an important part for it. Other comments, other issues? We good with sustain, this one, sustainability? Okay, all right, then we will take that direction on this one, as we have with all of our other ones. I have 337, so we have done really well on our time today. We have two other big moves that we have not covered yet, the employment centers and the identity focal points. We want to do those first thing in the morning, as I said, so that Paris can... We want to do those first thing in the morning, as I said, so that Paris can be here and be part of those discussions. And then once we talk about those, we have a few items that are what we see as the overall next steps and some of the tools to carry things out. So I think we've covered a lot around today. I feel very good about the discussion we've had, and it's exciting to have all the dialogue and interaction that we have on these issues. So I think this has been a, really, to me, a great discussion, a great session. I think it's always good to, when you can wrap up a meeting earlier than you said you were going to. And so let me see, if Donna has anything else to wrap up for today, and then we can adjourn early.
I don't. I've been to say that the discussion we've had today, I think from a staff perspective, we're pretty excited. The council is supportive of the direction, I think, that's here and laid out for you, and you can come up with some additional ideas, and I think this is an opportunity. It is a second chance for Louisville, and we need to grab it and run with it, and it's really exciting to me that you have this great team between the council and the staff that we can move forward with that.
With that, I'd like to encourage council tomorrow when we start, and I talked with Donna about this one yesterday, to encourage council, we start...
North Center left.
Okay. Well, that one happened yesterday, then we went right. Your phone just now figured that out.
Little bit of lag.
But I encourage council, remember that what we're doing, when we get tomorrow through the portion where we talk about actions and directions, that we're not, we're not here doing the 2014 plan. We're doing the 2025 plan, which would go in 2030, 2035, just like the 2010 plan is continuing to go on now, some of the things are just now being discovered that we're in there. But remember that, let's don't get tied down too much in the exact outcome, because those things are going to change. If we just set a parameter, here's the focus, here's what we're going to look at, here's where we want to be, instead of trying to determine how are we going to get there, how are we going to cost. If we set a program for sustainability, and we say we're going to do this, 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 five years from now, that may not be the sustainability that gets you there. We need to leave it where it's open, where we have the direction before it's open, that as time goes by, we can allow it to change, not be set in a certain, not pin ourselves in a certain...
You can have a hand in the process.
Yeah. Remember that?
Well said.
Anybody got anything else? Council, anybody? Staff, anything?
Breakfast at 8:30?
Breakfast at 8:30, starting now? When you get to North Center? Where's Aaron?
There you go.